Okay, I'll call the order. Can everybody hear me okay? I'll call the order of the January 6th, 2020, meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to ask our Chaplain Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward for the invocation. So if everyone please rise for the pledge.
May we pray? Gracious God, our Father, we give you praise and exalt your name together, and we thank you for the opportunities that this new year affords. Bless, oh Lord, that these our commissioners may be granted grace, that in this meeting, they may discern your will to carry it out, not only to see the possibilities before them, but to seize opportunities that would lead to the betterment of our community and our county. We thank you, oh Lord, for all of those who serve us in public office, but we pray in this season with many who are suffering from flu and other ailments, that you would grant to us healing and deliverance. But bless this meeting, we pray, that your peace may prevail, that your will will be accomplished, that all the glory may be yours. Amen.
Thank you, everyone, Womack. Okay, our next order of business will be a public comment session. I have no one signed up. Does anyone want to address the board at this time? Do you know want to close the public comment session, and we'll move to constituent concerns? Let's see, Tommy, do you have any constituent concerns?
Not really, other than a couple of just public comments, concerns. I keep getting comments from people talking about how many people's walking on their county roads, just to raise public awareness, you know, like we've got a lot of people, pedestrians on the road, got a lot of people riding bicycles, and just to kind of raise public awareness. If you're driving, be aware of that, and if you're walking, face traffic, wear some light colored clothing, and get off on the shoulder if possible. So just be careful. And also, surrounding the flu season, I know Dr. Patrick Johnson's here today, and just to raise public awareness, you know, practice some good, good personal hygiene and healthcare, and, you know, stay away from people that's sick. If you're sick, stay at home, and try not to spread the germs. So, other than that, that's about it. I don't have any.
Okay, and speaking of, speaking of that, Tommy, I have asked our HHS, from our Health Department Director, Patrick Johnson, to come forward and maybe give us a little update on the flu, maybe give us some pointers on, on that, since this is a good, good time to do that. We didn't have time to put this on the agenda, but I wanted him to come and do that, since this is real important at this time.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. Unfortunately, the 2019, 20 flu season has arrived earlier than in previous years and in a more aggressive fashion. The influenza activity has increased in North Carolina considerably in the last two weeks of 2019, as you can see on these two slides. If you look at the curve, the red curve, you can see that the increase is higher than in the previous two years of 2017 and 2018. Nationally, at least 2,100 people have died from influenza this season, including 22 children. In North Carolina, 10 people have died, including two children. The number of, and the predominant strain of influenza that we're seeing right now is B in children and A in adults. And in each flu vaccine, there are two strains of B, and there are two strains of A. The CDC continues to stress the importance of vaccination for prevention of influenza and antiviral medication for the treatment of influenza. We continue to stress the importance of getting a quadrivalent flu shot for, for the prevention of flu. Flu vaccination can prevent you from getting sick with flu. It protects women during and after pregnancy. Flu vaccine can be life-saving for children. It can reduce the risk of flu-associated hospitalization for children, working-age adults, and older adults. It's important prevent, it's an important preventative tool for people with chronic health conditions, and has been shown in several studies to reduce the severity of illness in people who get vaccinated but still get sick. Getting vaccinated yourself may also protect people around you, including those who are more vulnerable to serious flu complications, like babies and young children, and older people with chronic health conditions. And I'd like to emphasize that people with flu symptoms, fever, body aches, and fatigue, should seek medical care. They should not go to work or school. The Health and Human Service is having a special, a special flu clinic Thursday, January 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and our flu business has been very brisk of late.
And then when you have the, that's on January 9th?
January 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00.
So you'll be given shots?
Yes, sir.
And how much are those?
$40 cash.
Okay.
And we accept insurance.
Okay, okay. Does anyone have any questions? Everybody's writing it down up here. I appreciate you doing the clinic, because I think it's real important to, so, you know...
It's after hours for parents who want to bring their children.
Right.
But we've been doing very brisk business during the...
During this time?
The Christmas break.
Okay. So if, if anyone wants to get a flu shot right now, they can go to the...
Absolutely. We've been doing them all day long.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's on Paragon Parkway at the old Walmart, so if anyone needs a flu shot, please, please go. Anyone have any question?
I've had my flu shot.
Yeah, yeah, I went ahead and got one too. All right, thanks, Patrick. I appreciate you coming in this morning. I want to spur the moment, too. I called, I called Patrick Friday and said, we might all do this, so... Okay. Does anyone have any other constituent concerns? Okay, our next order of business is administrative agency reports, and our first item under that is the introduction of new county employees, and we have our County Manager, Bryant Moorehead, to introduce those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have lots of employees to introduce today. I'll start, when I call your name, please stand and remain standing until we're done. At Health and Human Services, we have Jubal Porter, Michelle Frisell, Elizabeth Travis, Joanne Barham, Danielle Epling, Pamela Kilby, Tanya Sorto, Monica Glover, Casey Hopkins. Sheriff's Office, we have Michael Maxwell and Douglas Harden. They're detention officers, so they may not be here. And in Soil and Water, we have Sheila Mode. These are our new county employees.
Okay, we want to thank y'all for being here. If you want to leave and go to work, you can. If you want to stay for the meeting, you can either way. But we appreciate y'all coming and work for our county. Okay, thank you for that, Bryant. Okay, our next order of business will be our, our item of our administrative agency reports will be the annual audit report from Gold Killian CPA Group, and we have the Audit Manager, Travis Keever, here this morning. Welcome, Travis, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you, too. All right, well, like you said, my name's Travis Keever. I was the Audit Manager on the FY19 Audit for the county. We appreciate you letting us be the auditors again this year. I always appreciate the opportunity. I'll get right into it. I'm going to be brief, and my presentation's mostly going to cover the reports that we issue as part of our audit. I'll touch on a couple of financial highlights as well. So we issue four separate reports in our CAFER. The CAFER just got released on, on Friday, so it's available for you guys to look at. Now Julie can get you that information as you want it. So we issue four reports. One is on the financial statements of the county. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means that we believe the county's financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's a clean opinion. That's the one everybody wants, so that's, that's the big one that'll be in the front of the CAFER. The second report is on internal control over financial reporting. This one's specific to governmental auditing standards. Governments and, and certain nonprofits are the only ones that get this. We review the internal controls that are in place in the county to ensure accurate financial reporting, and we reported no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. So we feel like the checks and balances that are in place in the Finance Office are doing what they're supposed to do to, to allow the, the financial data to be accurate and dependable. So that, that's a good thing. The third and fourth reports that we issue are on compliance with major federal and state programs and internal control over that compliance. This deals with the grant funding that's received by the county. We noted in these reports, one material weakness in internal control over compliance in the Medicaid program. This finding was related to errors noted during supervisory reviews of case files not being followed up with in a timely manner. It's important to note that the errors that, that we saw didn't relate to incorrect eligibility decisions. It was just a matter of a, a process not being as good as it could be to make sure that supervisory reviews are followed up on. So that's, to the best of my knowledge, already been corrected, so it should not be an issue going forward. Okay, click to the next slide. I'll have a clicker up here. Okay, I'll hit just a couple of financial highlights. This is a summary of the, the revenues in the General Fund. This looks very similar to any other county in the state. Little over half your revenue is generated from property tax, about 44 and a half million this year. And then, of course, the second biggest is local ops and sales tax. For you guys, that was about 15 and a half million. Restricted intergovernmental revenue is about 11.7 million. That's, that's essentially grant funding. And then other various items made up another 11 million. Here's the same chart for expenditures, and again, just like most other counties in the state, education, public safety, and human services were the three biggest ones. That's, that's probably 100 out of 100 counties. That's going to be your top three expenditure items. So nothing, nothing surprising there at all. This shows your, your trend of fund balance and fund balance available in the General Fund, and you can see there's a general upward trend on those, which would be expected with the, kind of the good economy we've had the last few years. The darker blue line is total fund balance. You can see, county contributed about 2.4 million to fund balance for FY19. And available fund balance, which is fund balance available for appropriation, went up also a little over 2 million. The difference in those two numbers, to get to available fund balance, you take the total fund balance and subtract out some stuff that's restricted that you guys can't appropriate. So the, the primary one is, is money that's receivable that you haven't collected yet. But that's the difference in those. And this shows a, a line graph of fund balance available, comparing you guys to some of your, your peer groups. The LGC in North Carolina requires that you keep at least 8% of your General Fund expenditures on hand, be a fund balance available. That's, that's not a coincidental number. 8% is one month's worth of expenditures. That's what they require. You guys right now have 37% of your fund balance, so you've got about four and a half months' worth of operating expenditures on hand to appropriate if the needs arise. Of course, Haywood County's the red line. You're at 37.1%. Your population group average, which would be similar-sized counties, is the blue line, and then all counties in North Carolina is the green line. And so you guys are, are trending slightly above your peer group and counties as a whole. So that's also a good thing. This shows some stats on property tax collection, which I'm sure you guys are, are probably aware of these numbers. Your collection rate is, as usual, kind of hovering around 97.5% to 98%. So that's a, that's a good solid collection rate, and seems to be pretty consistent. So this next slide shows some data about your, your retiree healthcare plan that you guys offer. This is a big number on your balance sheet, so we like to put, put something on here. You've got a, a retiree healthcare liability of about $40 million right now. That's, that's what an actuary predicts that it'll take to, to kind of cover the benefits you guys have promised for the existing employees and, and retirees that are currently receiving benefits. That says OPEB liability as of June 30, 2018. That's not a typo. The actuary measures those. They're kind of a year behind on their measurement, so we don't know what it is right now, but as of a year and a half ago, it was 40 million bucks. The kind of key metric I would look at on that, the OPEB liability per member, that's essentially per employee or per retiree that's receiving benefits, is about $66,000. So for the, the retiree healthcare package you guys offer, it costs about $66,000 in today's dollars per member. And then the last thing I'll talk about, in our board communication document, which, which you guys should be receiving soon, we add a blurb in there about cybersecurity. There's a four-page handout in there talking about things that governments can do to kind of keep themselves safe. You've probably heard the news that local governments are becoming the target of cyber criminals. I've, I've seen it happen with a couple of our clients in western North Carolina that have lost a significant amount of money due to, to bank accounts being hacked and that sort of thing. It's affecting governments large and small, and in fact, smaller governments are often a target, because they're often perceived to have, have less advanced safeguards in place. Commonly, what happens is they find a way to get into your system and then use that to get bank account information. They'll hold data for ransom. In other words, they'll change all the passwords where nobody can access the system, and then make the government pay money to, to kind of get their data back. This is often done by, by what's called an email phishing scheme. They just send out emails with, with links in it that people shouldn't click on, and it only takes one person to click on it. So training's a big issue on that, making sure people know not to click on stuff they shouldn't click on. So what we're recommending that all governments do, just make sure that you're, that you've got a plan in place, and that you've done risk assessment, that you know where the risks are, and that you've got a plan should anything happen, and then also make sure that adequate insurance coverage is in place. The, the cyber insurance industry's changed a lot in the last few years. What may have been adequate four or five years ago may not be adequate anymore. So we would just encourage everybody to take a look at what coverage you have and, and see if it's still good. That's about all I've got. I'm happy to take any questions, if anybody has any.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I do appreciate Julie and her staff, you know, having a good audit. That's always, and I always say this, and it's good that, we can't say that, that Julie does a great job, and her staff do a great job, and we appreciate the work they do. And it's just a department we don't have to worry about as commissioners, and we know they're doing their job and doing a good job. So appreciate you proving that to us.
Sure.
Yes. Any questions?
Just to call me, and I think, looks like the county's headed in the right direction, financially speaking. You know, our fund balance continues to grow. I know when I took office in 16, we were around 26% on our fund balance, and now we're above 37%, so I think that's great. It just reflects on how well, how good of a staff that the county has and the great job that everybody's doing. So thank you for validating that as well, so.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, Travis. Appreciate you coming out today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And, and the audit will be available to the commissioners, Julie?
A electronic version of it. The hard copies are going to be coming in the mail tomorrow, tomorrow. So if you want a hard copy, but I can certainly send you the electronic version of the audit plus the audit report.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll do that this afternoon.
And this PowerPoint, can we get that? Is that, is that part of the paperwork you're talking about?
Sure, yeah.
What?
Yeah, yeah, we can electronically, can send it to you, sure.
Okay. That was a good nutshell, if you will, so, okay. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our next item of the administrative agency reports is the Mountain Projects Transportation Update. We have Haywood Public Transit Director, Cy Simmons, here this morning. Welcome, Cy. Happy New Year.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to report on the Haywood County Public Transit. On September 30th, we rolled out what's commonly called the Urban Route, the Mountaineer West, that serves basically Waynesville, Hazelwood, Frog Level, those areas, and then the Black Bear East, which primarily serves Clyde and Canton area. Both, this was a soft rollout, and it was by, by design, because we are continuously changing and modifying this route just a little bit in order to best accommodate, you know, our, our numbers. The response has been tremendous. We, we purchased a brand-new bus out of the JARK FY1617 funds that you see. It's got the Mountaineer logo. We just recently, right before Christmas, we purchased a East bus, very similar to the West, so that bus will be here next week. So both these buses will have distinct markings, Mountaineer West with the Mountaineer, Black Bear East with the red and black, and the Black Bear. That's a little tough for me, being a Jackson County guy, you know, but, no, I'm just kidding. The response to that has been tremendous. We checked with the school systems. We checked with different people, see if the markings would infringe on anybody's copyrights, and, and it didn't, and the response has been great. So we're real proud of that. I asked for and was approved through the Haywood Public Transit, or the Haywood Health Foundation. They awarded us $11,000 for two bus stop shelters. Now, we've got several shelters already in place at Ingalls and at Walmart, but these two, along with three that were donated by the Macon County Transit Department. So we'll have five permanent shelters around the county. So we're, we're studying places to put that. So we'll, those will be coming up very shortly. I'm proud to report, after three months of operation, we're close to 900 riders on this route, and that's before any kind of major marketing campaign. So we feel real good about what we're doing. The West is performing slightly ahead of the East, but we're still trying to modify those locations that we're stopping in Clyde and Canton. So we're, we're real proud of that. So I'll leave it at that. I think I'm coming back up in a minute to talk about the road report, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I saw this, the comment there as well. I think, could you let folks know what they need to do if they want to ride those, those routes?
Yes, sir. We, the Mountaineer has done a real good job of publicizing that, and we've got brochures at different locations around the county. Now, we do plan a major rollout with some bells and whistles and, and really put it out there, but, you know, we were trying to modify this thing, and we were never ready. You know, when I came in April, there were different hurdles that we had to overcome, and I, Patsy has been tremendously supportive as this board has, that I understand. But we, we picked a date, September 30th, and we rolled it out. And, you know, we, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that that was, you know, without some type of problems, you know, reporting and different things that, that have come up. But I thought it was real important that these buses get on the road, and I think that's demonstrated by the number of passengers that we've had. And I mean, we're close to 1,000 people in three months that have got on and off these buses, so that the need is there, and we are publicizing, and we'll continue to do a better job of that.
If, if, if you want to ride, how much does it cost?
It's $1 every time you get on. So a passenger would get on in Clyde, and our central location for both routes is, and I think you've got this, is at Mountain Projects.
Okay.
And that has turned out to be a great thing, because we've got a welcoming station there with coffee and, and Patsy, and, and her staff have, have helped us with that. So people can get in out of the weather, take advantage of the services at Mountain Projects, get a cup of coffee, and then wait for the rest, West Route to come, get on there for another dollar, and go to, you know, Frog Level, or go to Ingalls and Hazelwood. And so a round trip, transporting back and forth, a total of $4. So that's, that's, that's pretty good, so. And we're going to roll out a unlimited monthly pass in the new year, so, you know, theoretically, a person could save some money that way, too, so.
Okay, great. And then, so do they have to have cash when they get on, or can they have a debit card?
No, we're just cash right now, but we're, we're open to different things. That just brings on a different level of problems. But we, we want to be there for the public and, and do everything we can. So if, if there's a need for that, we'll certainly look at that.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
We're glad to hear it's going well. Yes. Our next item of the agency reports is the Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership Affordable Housing Presentation. Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership Advisory Board Chair, Don McGowan, and Pat, and Mountain Projects Executive Director, Pat Seaton-Davis. Welcome this morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to be here. I would not be here this morning had it not been for an amazing group of people who saw the need for Mountain Projects to, to expand our, our knowledge, or expand public understanding of our organization and the community. And so a small group of people rallied and formed an auxiliary, and we have some of those folks here with us today, as well as our new Board Chair, Reverend Carl Matthews, and some of our Advisory Board members, who really help us expand Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership. But we really wouldn't be here today had it not been for a retired gentleman in our community, Don McGowan, who has spent literally hundreds of man-hours putting together a plan, analyzing our community, looking at our shortfalls, looking at how we can have a continuum of care in our community to take somebody from homeless to homeownership. And so Don's going to do the first part of the presentation. Don has an extensive background operating affordable housing programs as a retired banker from different parts of the country. So, Don?
Thank you, Patsy. Good morning.
Good morning.
There's a lot of information here, so I'm going to take it, take you through it very, very quickly. Starting with the strategic planning process, I'm going to cover the analysis portion of this plan, and then Patsy's going to take you through the action plans that we have created. The analysis is important, because it describes what affordable housing truly is, and there's a lot of misconceptions in this community about what affordable housing is. And then I'm going to tell you about the factors that are particular to Haywood County that are creating the affordable housing problem that we have here. So let's start with defining what affordable housing is, and let me tell you what it isn't. It is not homelessness. That is not affordable housing. And out in the community, you hear this all the time. The best definition of affordable housing is one that HUD came up with, and what HUD said was, "Housing is affordable when it comprises no more than 30% of a family's budget." Now, there's two pieces to that. You have the cost of housing, which includes, if you own a house, a mortgage, taxes, insurance, and the cost of utilities. And as you know, here in the mountains, utility costs are very high. Add those two things together, you divide that through by your income, and you come up with a ratio of, of somewhere around 30% higher or lower. To the extent that it's higher, housing becomes unaffordable to you. So this is the definition of, of affordable housing. Now, how does it get applied to Haywood County, and what does that look like? In Haywood County, 29% of our households are housing cost burden. 23% of the homeowners are housing cost burden, and a very shocking figure to me, 48% of the folks that are renting here in Haywood County are cost burdened. That's close to half of the renters in Haywood County are having a hard time affording their housing. And I looked into this figure, because I found it to be very surprising. And when I drilled into it, what I found was that this community is very much under stress, the renter community. We have here in Haywood County over 460 eviction filings in 2019. I found that to be an astounding figure, when you consider that we are in the best of economic times right now, that to have 462 people threatened by the, by eviction. Now, let's look at the fact... Now, let's look at the factors that are creating this problem. These factors are specific to Haywood County. They're on the demand side of affordable housing and the, the supply side. There are six factors, and I'm going to quickly go through them with you. The first one is the aging population. We are an older community here. I don't think that's surprising to me. The median age here in Haywood County is forty-seven and a half years old. That's twenty-four percent higher than the North Carolina average. So what's causing that problem? Well, it's not a problem. What's causing that demographic? It might be a problem for some of us that are getting older, though. We have a sixty-five-year-old in overpopulation that is just escalating very fastly. So look at this, this chart. In two thousand, twenty-five percent of the population here was sixty-five years old and over. Twenty years later, one-third of the population is sixty-five years and older, and by the year two thousand and twenty-five, thirty-five percent of the population is going to be over sixty-five. Now, in terms of affordable housing, that's a real issue, because once you get to sixty-five, like me, and, and past, like me, you're going to be retired or soon to be retired, you're going to live on a fixed income. And living on a fixed income is difficult because, as you know, housing costs go up, fixed incomes don't. That creates a gap in affordability. And given the size of the elderly community here in Haywood County, that becomes a real issue for us on the policy side. Poverty. Poverty is high in Haywood County. Poverty rate is sixteen point six percent. That's twenty-four percent higher than the national average. I looked into that statistic, and I looked at the individual towns here in Haywood County, and I was surprised again, because what I found is that the town of Waynesville is causing most of this issue on the poverty side. The town of Waynesville has a poverty rate, the last I looked at, was twenty-two percent. And at twenty-two percent, that rate is sixty to sixty-five percent higher than the national average. So I think we need to take a look at that when we look at solutions for affordable housing, because poverty levels are very, very high in the town of Waynesville. Next would be low-paying jobs. Again, you know all this, I understand that, but I think the community needs to understand this too. The county task force on housing, I think, said it best, and they said that we're a tourism-based service economy. So even though these are the best of economic times, unemployment rate here in Haywood County is at a historic low, the jobs we are creating are mostly low-paying jobs. County's working hard to change that, the chamber's working hard to change that, but over the near term, that is the reality that we're facing. These salaries, by the way, that I'm showing on this chart, are the salaries, the average salaries here in Haywood County, and you can see those levels. Only caveat, I would say, on the teacher's side, when I drilled into this data set, they used preschool teachers in there that have a salary of about twenty-three thousand. Don't think they should have. If you take the preschool teachers out and you look at K through twelve, I think you're, you're looking at an average of about forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars. Then we go to the supply side of things. Regional market impacts. The median listing price, and this came out of Zillow, for a house here in Haywood County, has risen approximately forty percent over the last five years. It's gone from one hundred ninety-nine thousand up to two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And at the same time, rental rates have gone up. I got this out of Zillow also. Rental rates in Haywood County have gone up twenty-four percent in three years, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars up to a thousand and thirty-three dollars. This would be for a typical two-bedroom apartment or house. Looking at regional market impacts, we then compared Haywood County to Buncombe. And I don't think you're going to find this surprising. Buncombe County, according to Zillow, the average rental is sixteen hundred and thirteen dollars for the same type of housing compared to a thousand dollars in Haywood County. That's a sixty percent difference. And then you look at the median listing prices for homes in Buncombe, they're a hundred thousand dollars higher than Haywood. I think this was best described in an article in the Citizen Times back in October. You can't see this, but the headline says, "Report: Few Homes Under Two Hundred Thousand: Skyrocketing Rents." So what is going to happen? When people seek affordability, in this case, they're going to go west, okay? And that demographic from Buncombe County is going to continue to cascade over us, and in doing so, it's going to continue to put pressure on both rental rates and on the cost of housing here in Haywood County. This was very surprising to me. I think this is kind of under the radar for a lot of people. What I'm talking about are vacation rentals here in Haywood County. There are three major websites for vacation rentals, and I think you know this, Airbnb, VRBO, and FlipKey, and there are a few others. I went out to the VRBO website, and I said, "Hey, VRBO, how many houses do you have listed on your website for Haywood County?" Fourteen hundred and forty-one homes here in Haywood County are listed for vacation rentals. I then went out to Zillow, and I said, "Hey, Zillow, how many houses do you have that are listed for rent outside of vacation rentals?" You're not going to believe this figure, folks. Seventeen houses and apartments listed for rent. So you've got fourteen hundred and forty-one for vacation rentals, and for the people that live here and work here, you had seventeen listings. Now, keep in mind, that was one site I went out to. Airbnb is larger, I couldn't get the data out of them. So my bet is there are probably two to three thousand homes here that are being used for vacation rentals as opposed to permanent rentals for the workforce. And then the last factor would be lack of easy-to-develop land. I don't need to spend any, any time on this. You know, we live in the mountains, we build on slopes, we don't have a lot of sewage and water coverage out in parts of, of the county, and that elevates the cost of building affordable housing. So those are the factors that are impacting affordability. Now, let's take a look quickly at the housing market, and then I'm going to turn it back to Patsy. This is called the housing continuum, and it shows the housing market segments that are in play here in, in Haywood County, and more importantly, the nonprofit providers that are providing that housing for the county. So if you go from the left part of this continuum, you start with emergency shelters. This is where the homeless population somewhat resides, and the primary nonprofit there, as you all know, is Pathway. You then go to transitional housing. What transitional housing is, it's heavily subsidized rental housing, is usually a case management component for, for people of special needs. Now, here, the primary players, I looked off Pathway, but Pathway, as you know, is starting to do transitional housing. So Pathway's in there, Reach, Each, Launch Chapel, Mountain Projects does a little bit of that. Then we go to subsidized housing. That's low-income housing. The primary player there is the Waynesville Housing Authority. And as you all know, they do a great job, but they've been somewhat dormant in creating new housing over the last twenty to thirty years. Good news here is I think that's going to change. Mountain Projects has a little bit of that, and then you go to tax credit developers. That's the good news too. As you know, the old hospital building, we might get fifty or sixty new units over there, desperately needed, but tax credits are hard to come by. I don't need to tell you that because you've had more experience with it than me. And from there, you go to, guess what? You go to affordable housing. Affordable housing is workforce housing, and the people that are in this spot are the people that I mentioned at the beginning, those cost-burdened people, the fifty percent of the renters, the twenty-five percent of the homeowners reside in that spot. And then we go out to the market. Now, in a healthy housing market, you're able to move people from one side of this continuum out to market housing. That's not happening here in Haywood County. Why? The reason why, if you look at this chart, the nonprofit providers that we have here that do this tremendous work in this community are operating in silos. They're not spread across the continuum. They're occupying one singular space, maybe two at the most. Now, why is that taking place? It's taking place because they're resource-constrained. There's very little money available for affordable housing. Affordable housing is very expensive to build. No secret to you. So those are some of the issues that are happening within the market itself. Because these people are operating in silos, it's difficult to move people from one part of the continuum out to market housing, because they have to hand off from one nonprofit to another. So a need here is that there needs to be a central coordinating spot. This was brought out in the county report for housing, and I think Patsy will be discussing that a little bit right now. Patsy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Does anybody have any questions for Don?
Well, I, I had, I don't know if I had questions, but I just had some comments that, I know Mountain View Housing's not listed on here, and that's, that's a housing, subsidized housing in Canton. It's pretty good size. I, I represent Waynesville Housing Authority and Mountain View Housing, and that's why I know. The other thing on the eviction filings, I, I don't know if those were filings or the actual judgment of eviction, but you know, there's, I would say, fifty percent of the filings that we do at Waynesville Housing Authority and Mountain View Housing, they usually pay and comply so they can stay, because obviously, from your presentation, there's really no other place for people to go. And, and it's kind of amazing to me when, when we are filing an eviction, because they don't have a place to go, there's no affordable place to go. And I did have a question regarding the, how do you determine the, the poverty level and who is, who, who are the people that are in poverty? And, and what do we do about that? Because, you, you know, there's, there's so many businesses out here struggling to find people to work, and yet we've got poverty. Those are the people that we, that are included in this group of the people with poverty. Do they have jobs, and they just, they're still in poverty because of the low-paying jobs, or do they do not, don't they work? You know, I, I don't, how do you find that out? And then you may not know the answer, but I think that's a problem.
Let me start by saying, those are really good questions. In, in terms of eviction filings, they were filings, and you're absolutely right, not all of them are going to lose their homes or apartments. But I think it shows you the stress that's in that rental community. In terms of poverty levels, poverty rates are computed by the Census Bureau, okay? There, I, I can't be totally accurate on this, but there are about ten to fifteen factors that go into that ratio, but it's, it's very much income-based. So if you're talking about homelessness and poverty, it's not necessarily that, it's primarily low-income folks in the community who are kind of struggling to, to gain a footing here.
So, so when you talk about the folks that are in poverty, in that poverty group, we're not even talking about the homeless people, because we're, we believe they don't even have a job. So we can't, we can't determine the income level for them to, to categorize them in the poverty group.
Right. I'm not the expert on poverty, the computation of that poverty statistic. I would say, first of all, since it's being created by the Census Bureau, I think a lot of the homeless fall through the cracks in terms of being caught up in the census count. So my bet is, most of that poverty ratio are people who live here, work here, who are at a very low income level.
Yeah, I think, the sheriff was telling me that at Pathway's, you've got folks in the homeless shelter that are employed full-time. So to me, that says they can't find housing, and that's all they have is, is a homeless shelter because they can't afford a home.
Right.
Because we don't have enough of the, you know, five, six hundred dollar a month, and that would probably be cost-burdened. Somebody making ten dollars an hour, that's only four hundred dollars a week, you know? So if they're in the homeless shelter and they're employed full-time, it means that they're not, you know, there's just not any housing that they can afford, and, and we've got, you know, and they can't, and so they, they end up in the homeless shelter, and they've got a full-time job. So, I mean, it, that's, that's what I'm...
And do those, do those numbers include people that's retired? I know you had a slide where we have an aging population, and that trend's going up. Naturally, they're on fixed income. Do they factor into those equations?
Yes, yes, they are. Yes.
So they do?
Yes. Absolutely. The affordability, I think, here really impacts the workforce. You know, trying to recruit teachers. If they can't find housing here, they're probably not going to want to move into the county. So it, it's, it's touching almost every aspect of the community, demographic, from, from homelessness to low-income elderly people to workforce housing, it touches everything. Now, the good news here is that we're doing something about it, and I'm going to turn it over to Patsy to discuss that.
On the board now is, is a group of people who's going to really help our group move forward to meet the goals that we've outlined with Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership. Some of the goals that you see listed really came as a result of talking to people we serve in the community, our neighbors, people that, that call into Mountain Projects, people I, I meet on the street and know. And what I hear from people is we've got several issues. One is, back to the affordability. In Haywood County, if you work and earn minimum wage, you have to work two-point-two jobs to afford fair market rent in our community. That's a hundred hours a week. I often see those people who are doing that, who are stretched to the limit, who are working as hard as they can, and they are so close to slipping off the edge. I also talk to people, some who work with me, unfortunately, some of my coworkers who say, "I pay eight hundred and fifty dollars a month for rent, and my trailer floor is falling in." And when we do Section Eight Rental Assistance inspections, we often walk up online, because we can get people evicted if we're not careful trying to make a landlord fix up a property. We've got some tremendous landlords, but we also have some that, that when we try to push those repairs, they get evicted, our clients do. So those goals really were set as, as hearing from those that we serve and our neighbors in the community.
Patsy, don't, you can't find housing, though, right, for your vouchers? Is that a problem also?
That's correct.
So you have vouchers, but you, they can't, you can't find any housing that...
That's correct. We've got two issues going on with Section Eight Rental Assistance. One is our waiting list has been closed for eleven months. We had an excess of seven hundred names on that waiting list. So if you needed housing, and you came into Mountain Projects, we're going to put you on a three- or four-year waiting list. So we had to close it just to manage that waiting list. The other issue we face is we give them thirty days to find a place to rent. A lot of landlords can make a whole lot more than they can make with Mountain Projects' payment standards that are set by the government. And so we have to re, renew that voucher up to three times, and then they lose it. So there's, those are the issues that are going on with Section Eight Rental Assistance. So our mission is really to, to try to expand and help our families and our communities afford and be able to obtain the American dream. This all comes back to preserving the American dream. If we don't do it, then who's going to do it? So Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership has a mission to do that. We are expanding some of the things that we're doing right now. We want to start a one-stop counseling center, a place that's open to meet people where they are, if that's nights, if that's weekends, if that's holidays, whatever that is, and offer a wide array of, of services to those folks. We see through our self-help housing program that we are able to put people in a home, a first-time home, a modest home, that they can save money. The last groups that we did saved an average of two hundred dollars per month paying a mortgage versus paying rent. So we really want to expand on that. We do a lot of things great right now. We do a self-help housing program. We have property that we've put an option on in Clyde and in Jackson County that we hope to obtain that grant. We've done fifty-one homes here in Haywood County. The average equity in those homes, when a client walks in, is over thirty thousand dollars. We've had one foreclosure in, in the twenty years we've done it, basically, and great track record. This is a, a, a shot of some new floor plans, that we've upgraded our floor plans that we're going to be offering on these new developments. Here comes a real, great opportunity that we have, and we have forty lots available that was gifted to us, basically, down on Jonathan Creek, that we really want to offer to our workforce, folks here in Haywood County. We want to offer that to teachers, firefighters, police officers, all those who are serving our community. We have those forty lots available. We're working on an option right now that would allow them to purchase that, a, a piece of property, ready to build, fully developed, water sewer, everything's already in. everything's already in that development. And to do that with little money down and to help them beat them where they are. If they need some additional assistance with a mortgage, we could also do that. So that's one of our goals is to expand that. The other exciting thing that we're going to be working on in partnership with Western Carolina University, we have three professors that are partnering with us. And we will start working with students next Friday to develop a micro home community, our tiny home village. I will show you pictures. This is a micro home that, village that we visited down in Greensboro recently. When you walked into that development, you felt like you were at home. You felt like you were a part of a community. There's lots of different options for people to do this. Some of our elderly have expressed an interest in this. This could be transitional housing. And then some people just, less is more when you get older. So there's lots of areas of opportunity. We want to have edible landscaping, area for a community development facility or center there. On April the 29th, at 6 o'clock, Western Carolina University students will be presenting. And we welcome anybody in our community to come. I don't know if Amy has made it. Amy is here. She is with the social work department and has lined up for this presentation to happen. The good thing about having Amy and Bob from a social work perspective is we're going to increase evidence-based interventions and barely be able to, to show return on investment when we get through with, with this potential project. Of course, we need money. We always need money. But we wanted, we had a goal of starting with $500,000 as, to capitalize this project. We have raised $210,000. Many people in this room have obligated and have pledged and have contributed significant amounts of money, including up to $25,000. We hope at some point that the county will consider helping support our effort. We continue to write grants. We submitted a grant for over $100,000 last week to really jumpstart our housing counseling center. We continue to, we've hired a project manager, a construction manager that will start to help us start developing these properties. So there's lots of potentials. We've got a revolving loan fund that was just approved that we can buy and purchase land and not have to pay it back until we've resold the property. So there's a lot of great things going on with Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership. I'd love to talk more about it in the future. Love to have your support at some point.
Anybody have a question?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate what the board has done and the, and the people on that board. You have some really good folks up there. I wish you'd left that up a little while longer for the public to see. But you know, it's a real difficult issue to deal with. I appreciate Don and his presentation. And I'm familiar with Don's background and we're very, we're benefited greatly by having you participate in this because I know of your background. The, the TDA has talked about this. I'm a member on the board of the TDA. We've talked about affordable housing and actually how it affects tourism and development and also the vacation homes that you mentioned. And we've seen that, I mean, it has increased dramatically over the last several years, the amount of homes. So there's, there's homes out there available, but they are being used for Airbnbs and one week rentals and things like that. And as a matter of fact, in my practice, I have found that we have folks coming here to purchase homes. And sometimes they purchase them just for the business aspect of it. They don't even look at the price of the home. They look at the income that they're receiving and, and treat it as, as a business purchase instead of, you know, this is what it really costs to buy this home. So it, it's going to be a real difficult issue to deal with. And I hope the county can help participate in some of it. Because you know, if you don't have people in their homes and it affects their lifestyles, it affects their children, it affects the schools. And it's, it just, it's an impact throughout the entire county. And so I appreciate what you're doing and hopefully we can try to, to work the best we can to have, to have a better situation for affordable housing. I think because of our location and because of the impact of Asheville, because of the national impact of, of how well-known Waynesville in this area is becoming, it's become, it's going to be more and more of a problem that you're going to have to tackle. Because you're going to continue to see the increased, increase in housing prices. And when you have that with the rentals as well. And so I appreciate somebody working on it, but it's a tough situation.
We've got an amazing group that's willing to work and help us try to, we, we really hope to have a lot of people qualifying for mortgages, refer them to Habitat, refer them, refer them to private mortgage companies, to banks. So we really want to meet people where they are and preserve that American dream.
Yeah. If you can get someone in a home, they're going to be paying less on their mortgage than they're paying rent right now. I would say at least, you know, $200 or $300. But you just have to get them in that home. And of course, you, you know all about getting them qualified. And sometimes that's not so easy either.
Yeah, just a comment. I sit on the Mountain Projects Board and I appreciate Patsy and y'all coming this morning. It opened my eyes. I knew we had a, a problem, you know, with affordable housing. But when you sit and listen to all the data that you presented today, I think it was great that everyone else can hear the same thing. So that we can put our efforts in help this is Kurt. It's going to be a large roll across. But thank you, Patty, for what you do. I, I see on a monthly basis what she does there at Mountain Projects and the rest of the, the staff there as well. And I think it goes unnoticed a lot of times, but we appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
Patty, I was wondering, on, on the, okay, so you want to hire a construction manager? Will, will he be building the homes?
It's going to be a combination. In our self-help housing program, there's a sweat equity component and you're teaching people to become a homeowner.
So you're talking about the, you're talking about your program?
Well, that's, that's maybe a part of the job. The other part is to facilitate construction, either the tiny homes or the homes that we will do.
Okay. The 210,000 that you've raised, and you're trying to get to 500,000. So are you, once you get to that goal, then will you build homes? And that be self-perpetuating to where, in other words, you built, you've got $500,000, you can build five homes or whatever. Then as you sell those homes, you just basically roll that money over and build another one? Is that kind of what you're trying to do, trying to get to? So, so maybe we could look at, maybe the, our board can maybe look at contributing to that. We're getting ready to start our budget process. And so I think that's something, I think this is a partnership. And I, I believe strongly in partnerships. We're working with the private sector, the public sector, municipalities. I think if we all kind of chip in, we can get to that 500,000, then you can start just kind of doing that. I could see how that could keep going and going and going.
Creating our own affordable housing.
Right, right. Exactly, exactly. And then when you sell these, is there, is there a stipulation where somebody can't flip it? I mean, how do you, how do you, how do you?
We will certainly have that, have that in there.
Is that what you do? Like in the self-help housing, what, how do you do that? In other words?
Well, that's USDA regulated, so there's a, there's a requirement in there. But we also have some language that we're working on with our lot sales that give us the first right of refusal back and those kind of things.
Yeah, okay. I think this is a great idea and a good way to, it's a good start. And you know, to, if it's self-perpetuating, then we can just continue, you know, as we find land available, we can do that. And you've got those lots in Jonathan Creek. I know you can't use USDA because you don't have public road access, but you can definitely do the, the private, you know, the workforce housing where you can, you know, teachers can go in there or law enforcement. I know they are, the state employees credit union, I think, has zeroed down maybe for some of their housing, if I'm not mistaken. I see that a lot, it seems like when I'm looking at loans and stuff. So you know, that's, I know that's available to teachers, you know, for, you know, to get, to get into those homes. So that's, that's really important to, to realize. Anybody else have any other comments?
We appreciate your time. We're sorry we've run a little long.
Thank y'all for coming. I was excited to hear this, by the way. I was wanting to say that I was excited to hear this program and see what y'all were doing, so.
Well, it's thanks to this group right here, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Our next item of agency reports is the United Way update on our NC 211 services. And we have our NC 211 Asheville Center Director, Amanda Bowman. And I think Solisa Willet's here also from United Way. We were at a, we were at a law enforcement, I forget the name, what was that called, Brandon? We were at LE.
Oh, LEPC.
LEPC meeting. And we were talking about 211. And I really didn't know that much about 211. But it, so we wanted y'all to come and present and so we can get the word out on it. So go ahead.
Well, thank you for having us. Thank you for having us this morning. As the executive director of United Way of Haywood County, we are pleased to offer this service to Haywood County. NC 211 is a referral agency. And Amanda Bowman from the NC 211 Call Center in Asheville is going to tell us more about it. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you, Solisia, and thank you all for this opportunity. So in 2019, NC 211 answered 132,000 calls across the state of North Carolina. Of those, 28,000 were in western North Carolina. Of those, 650 were from Haywood County. We all know that there's plenty more people living in Haywood County than 650. So what exactly is 211? And when is a good time to use 211? So as Solisia mentioned, we are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. It's free, it's confidential, and it's available in any language. We have referral specialists that are bilingual in Spanish. And we also use a language line for any other language. We have two call centers. I represent the Asheville Call Center, which covers the 16 most western counties. Of course, that includes Haywood County. The Asheville Call Center has been accredited since 2001. So we've been around for a little bit. We've actually been in the area since 1970. Here are the people that are answering the calls. They are the face that you only hear their voice. They receive a rigorous training before they answer any call. So they have an array of backgrounds, social work, mental health, counseling, you name it, we've done it. Why they get this training, though, is a mystery of the call. We never know why somebody's going to call us. So we've already heard about flu shocks. We've already heard about transportation. We've already heard about affordable housing. Those are all reasons to call 211. We have a frequent caller, though, that says that we are more friendly and better than Google. So let's talk through why using 211 is better than just Googling this information. Let's say a woman, Ms. Molly, calls and she wants the phone number for Duke Power. Okay, sure, we have that phone number. Now, Ms. Molly, are you looking for reporting a power outage? Or are you looking for customer service? Well, I'm not sure. I don't have my power on right now, but I think it's because I missed a bill. So our specialist then will dig a little bit deeper. Okay, Ms. Molly, would it be helpful if we find some agencies that can help with getting your power turned back on? Then Ms. Molly shares, well, actually, she just became the full-time caregiver for her two young grandkids. And she doesn't have that documentation yet. So she's not sure how she would go to these agencies and show that her household's bigger. Well, our specialist would offer to call the agencies on her behalf to figure out what exactly she has to bring. But our agency, our, our specialist will not stop there. They'll also ask, now, Ms. Molly, taking care of two young kids, that's a lot. How are you doing with that? Ms. Molly then might share that she has a history of depression. And some days, having two young kids is just too much. So then our specialist will do a crisis intervention and figure out the best kind of supports to get Ms. Molly. But since they talked about a lot, remember, this just started with getting the phone number for Duke Power. They'll offer a follow-up. So they'll follow up with Ms. Molly to see how she's doing. So they'll make sure her power got turned back on. But then they'll also make sure that she's doing okay. Because having two young kids all of a sudden, that's a lot of work. And that's what 211 is here for. But here's the thing, we're not just here for the callers. We're also here for the community. Because we're able to report out things like the top needs. So these are the top needs from 2019 for here in Haywood County. But we do more than that. We're here for a companion piece to the different service providers to their work. So we have a lot of social workers, school social workers, hospital discharge workers that call us because they run into a situation and they've never had it before. So they just need to know where to refer the caller. So they call us. In addition, we're able to let decision makers know about the top needs and the top unmet needs. So for example, we can tell you that yes, there is an affordable housing crisis in Waynesville and in Asheville. And we can show you those numbers. Lastly, which I think is most important for this audience, we're able to help emergency management by handling non-emergency calls. So Greg does a wonderful job of keeping us posted anytime there's winter weather and if their shelters are opening, things along those lines. But I'm a Haywood County resident and I also have to use 911 sometimes. And I love that 211 is there for those people that might be calling 911, but shouldn't really, and should be calling 211. So Ms. Molly, she was going through a personal crisis and she might call 911, but she shouldn't be calling 911. She should be calling 211. And then 911 is available to the residents that actually need it. That's all I have. What questions do y'all have?
You're like a, you're like Google with a person on the other end. Does anybody have any questions?
You may have covered it, but how was 211 created?
Yeah, totally. So we are a program of United Way. So we're part of a statewide system. In 1970, we started as a first call for, first call for help and have evolved into 211. So it's funded by United Ways, it's funded by different counties. It's a whole, whole array of funding.
And so how many calls do you get usually a day? I mean, are those, those folks work every day? Are they pretty busy and?
Yeah, definitely. So at the Asheville Call Center, we have about three people that are on the lines at all times. And they are ready for any kind of call that might come through. We can always staff up. So if a lot of people spread the word, 211, we can add more people.
So how many counties does the Call Center in Asheville handle? How, how many counties does that entail?
Yes, totally. So we do 16 counties in the west. And then the other 84 are covered by the Durham Call Center. So we're local, all of our people live local. And we know the area like nobody else knows it.
That's true.
So also, since we're part of a statewide system, we also become the governor's hotline during state, state emergencies. So anytime there's a hurricane, you'll hear the governors up there mentioning, call 211. So that's also to relieve it so that 911 is not getting the non-emergency calls. So we are recognized across the state as also being that go-to for the non-emergency needs.
So does 911, when someone calls them with, with, do they, do they recommend calling 211?
I believe so, yes. With, with other counties, we've done actually a retraining of the public. So if somebody calls 911 and they shouldn't be calling 911, they say, you need to hang up and call 211. And that's, it gets them in their, in the mindset of when to use 911 and when to use 211.
Right, okay. Well, like I said, we were at the LEPC meeting and we were listening about 211 and we really wanted you to come and give a presentation so we can get the word out.
Yeah, definitely.
Because we do have people watch our, our, our meeting on TV. In the, it goes out over the cable system into the government TV channel. So we wanted to get the word out.
Perfect. There's basically no wrong reason to call us. We're always available. We're always a friendly voice and we're always there to help talk through whatever's going on. Because a lot of times people call about one need and it emerges into a lot of other needs, with the example of Ms. Molly.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for coming all the way out this morning. It's good to know you live in Haywood County.
I live down the street, but thank you for having me.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Solisa. Okay, our next item of the agency report says there are non-emergency ambulance transportation system update. And we have our emergency services director, Greg Shupin, and deputy director Travis Donaldson here to report on that. Mainly, this is about the convalescent transport.
It is. Thank you guys very much. I want to start out by just thanking everyone for supporting us in this endeavor. I think it's been almost exactly a year ago when we were able to, go ahead and maybe go into this emergency transportation business. And over the course of the year, it took us quite a while, but we got the funding. We worked together and we got the funding to hire the appropriate staff, to hire the, to get the equipment in place. Many of you, but also the departments and administration and county government put our heads together. Anytime you're trying to start a new program like this, you know, there's a lot of unknowns about how much is it going to cost? And if we're going to make any money or if we're going to come out to the good and doing those kind of things. And I'm happy to report that I think we hit the, we hit the nail on the head on this one. We did a really good job in, in working together to get this thing put together correctly. Just a few stats about the last year of our department as a whole. And I think a lot of this, you know, to just talk about non-emergency transports, it really does. of this, you know, to just talk about non-emergency transports, it really does kind of roll into our entire department. Our OSHA-related injuries this year has dropped from 11 to 5. That's a significant number of drops. So we're, so we're operating in a safer environment. Our employee training has doubled. Some other, some other stats is we've decreased our need for out-of-county mutual aid for emergency response. You'll recall that when all this began, we were having to call out-of-county EMS agencies to help us very frequently, and now that's, that's been decreased substantially because of the staffing that you've provided. Also, our staff turnover rate has dropped from an average of 17 annually down to 7 this year. So this, for the year 2019, over half of our, of our turnover rate has dropped. I thought that was, that was great. Down to our convalescent call volume, this year, we experienced 1,585 convalescent or non-emergency calls. That was an increase in our call volume of about 12%. A 12% is pretty significant, but also when you look at the number of staffing that you provided us, that number is almost to exactly 12% as well. So we met, we matched that number pretty closely. The call volume from September till December was 675. The reason I bring that up is that's when you guys authorized us and we were able to hire and get trained up the folks that work Medic 8, what we came to be known as Medic 8, which was the convalescent truck, they're the truck that normally handles the convalescent calls. They, they ran about, they ran 353 of the 675 calls. And you might say, well, that's only about half of the convalescent calls. Well, they only work about half of the time. So if you'll, if you'll recall, what we tried to do was determine what, when the call volume for non-emergency transports was going to occur, and we determined that somewhere between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, six days a week, every day but Sunday was that day. And so they are running a large majority of that call volume. I think, I think those times are, are pretty accurate. But it is also important to note that they, they ran 180, excuse me, 130 more calls from September till December than just the non-emergency calls. They ran that many emergencies, so we were able to, they were able to be in a position to be the closest ambulance 130 times the last four months of the year and make a difference in people's lives. The last thing I want to mention before we turn it over to Travis is, being an emergency service, we don't spend a lot of time with the citizens. By design, we don't spend a lot of time. We, we are with that person eight to 10 to 12 minutes on the scene of, of a serious emergency, and we rush them to the hospital and it's over with. What we've experienced this year, thanks to you and thanks to this non-emergency task, is we spent a lot more time with some of these folks. Some of these folks go to a certain maybe doctor's appointment three times a week, and we have the, the honor of taking them to that doctor's appointment three times a week. So I've heard a lot of good stories, just a couple to share with you. There was a certain patient of the, the convalescent crew that was kind of end of life, going to several doctor's appointments. We got the, the crew got to know this person and they said, you know, I just want to go see the mountains one more time from the Blurgge Parkway. You think, think some of these things that we take for granted. So the ambulance crew took just a moment on the way home from their doctor's appointment one day, and they drove them up to the parkway, sat them up, and opened the back doors, and they're able to see the mountains from there one last time. It's pretty awesome stuff. Another example was where a certain patient was going to dialysis three times a week. If you've had a family member that goes there, it's, you know, that appointment takes forever. It's an all-day, a trip to go to dialysis. This individual didn't have any way to watch TV while they were at their dialysis appointment, and our, one of our paramedic crews just purchased a DVD player so that they could take that with them, you know, so they could see, watch TV during their, you know, three to four hour dialysis that week. So there's, the stories go on and on, but that's the kind of stuff that's changed in emergency services over the last year. So it's, it's been a positive thing for the good. But the most important thing here, we, we also want to know is what's the cost? What, how much did it cost? What kind of revenue did we bring in? So we've got Travis that can share that information.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a couple brief notes. Our non-emergency transport non-direct cost, or known direct cost, excuse me, September through December was $80,405. That's salaries, fuel, repairs and maintenance, your, your general operating costs. Projected annual cost of that is going to be somewhere around $241,000. Projected revenue based on the current billing trend is around $425,000. So that puts us 183, 183,000 to the good. That's not including any capital or anything like that, those operating costs. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions at this time?
In a general summary, we're, we've upped our service that we're providing to the citizens of Haywood County, and we're using less tax dollars to up that service.
It looks like that was a good decision to, to do the convalescent transports, and I really appreciate the socialization reports, and I'm sure that there's many, you know, the convalescent transports are, people generally are in the life, you know? And so I appreciate the stories, and I know that there's many more where you're, you're helping with their quality of life, you know, as well as we're getting them to where they need to be faster than we were before when we didn't, you know, like from this time last year until, I guess, of the summer, we were just trying to get these folks worked in. And, and that was, that was too bad because, you know, those are our most vulnerable citizens, our elderly probably mostly, and, and we probably weren't. So now we're able to take care of them the way we should be, you know, that we should always be and stuff, and I appreciate y'all stepping up and doing that.
Yeah, and this kind of ties back into the Mountain Projects presentation earlier with the aging population that we're seeing. So this is probably only going to increase over the coming years based on this trend.
That's a very good point, yeah. Yeah, people are coming here to retire for sure. That's what we're seeing. I know, I know Kirk and I see them all the time, people, and people that, it's like they couldn't wait to get here and they're so glad when they get here that, you know, they love living here. And this is just a great service that we can, you know, can be talking about. Hopefully they'll be, y'all do some stories on that in the newspaper. But it seems like, does anybody have any questions?
This is more, I guess, of a comment towards Bryant. We're getting half of them. Feasibility-wise, with the money they're generating, they could put on another truck to take the rest of the load off, because I know the 911 calls are an issue. And we knew going into this that it was going to be something that might have to be expanded to meet the need. They're demonstrating they're meeting the need half the time. Is that something we can look at? I know we're going into the budget process, and it doesn't come without an expense.
Right.
But as it grows, if we don't stay up with it, we're going to run into a problem as these retirees start using that system more and more and more. The last thing we want to do is run out of ambulances. But if, if we could economically put another one in, they've already got the logistics apparently in place.
Yeah, that 12% increase in one year is pretty amazing. We can certainly look at the numbers. We had actually talked when we kind of set up Medic 8, maybe using that additional revenue to pay the debt on a Clyde base. But we could always look at using that funds to offset the operation of another ambulance. We'll crunch the numbers and have something for you during the budget process.
Okay.
The other thing, just to add to that, is that we, our community paramedic program started simultaneously this year, July last, of last year, and we estimate that our community paramedic has reduced our call volume by 4%. Now, 4% sounds like a, a pretty small number, but that represents about 500 times emergency calls that we didn't have to handle because we have someone out in the community taking care of those. The estimated operational expense saved from our community paramedic is a quarter of a million dollars.
That don't count what they say is a hospital, probably.
So I think that ties into the, yes, it dramatically saves healthcare in general from the hospital to us to the county. So it could be part of that discussion as well as, well, do we need another convalescent truck, or do we need another community paramedic to try to save money? So.
I did, I did have one question. You'd indicated the revenue and you said billed. Is, is it billed or is that actual, actually received? The 400 and something thousand dollar?
That is actual received.
Okay.
Yes.
There's a big difference in healthcare between what's billed and received.
Underst your report, you got to 104 more to call also as a director of what our action was. So that was kind of a concern of mine back early on when we were deciding which way to go with what kind of truck and how to staff it.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, my concern was getting the most bang for your buck, being able to provide those services to the county residents. So it sounds like that paid off. You had personnel on the road.
Absolutely. Sometimes it makes good business sense with it. We, obviously, we're going to send the closest ambulance to an emergency call and apparently 130 times just between September, December. And several of those calls were very serious cardiac emergencies and whatnot. So your, the result of your actions also saved lives on the emergency side, not just non-emergency.
Reduced your response time and things of that nature.
Yes, yes, sir.
Also, the OSHA report, you said it went from 11 to 5. Is, is that your personnel? I mean, you, you feel like that you're not under as much stress and working safer or?
I, I would like to think that a smaller call volume, when you spread it out amongst eight trucks instead of seven, I think makes a huge difference. So I'd also like to give accolades to you guys and the county administration and finance. When we started purchasing, all of the newer ambulances are purchasing safety-related and safety lists for the patient. A lot of our injuries were back and shoulder injuries from having to lift the stretcher. So a lot of, a lot of factor, a lot of expensive tools are being purchased in order to save safety injuries and whatnot.
And communication's a big part in that also. I know in the industry, you used to have a safety meeting once a morning, you know, in lots of places. You, you have safety awareness all the time with your employees, so that's, that's key also.
Thank you.
Thank you for the job you guys are doing.
And we, we'd also talked about, you, you, we may need to talk with the hospital on, on another community paramedic at some point in the future, because this has been so successful. But he's probably.
Anytime you've got a program that costs as little as our community paramedic program did and then yields what we feel like to be a quarter of a million dollar reduction in operational expenses, merits another discussion about whether other, more staffing would be appropriate or not.
Yeah, and just for the public, we partner with the hospital on that, so.
Yes, sir.
That's another partnership that we do to, to try to help our community, and so that is helping the community. And I know it helps energy care at the hospital, because in the emergency room, that's always an issue on how long it takes for you to get, get there and how long you're there. And so if it's cutting down on that and it's cutting down on the cost of the hospital, that's, that's all pluses.
Just one last question.
Okay.
Kevin, Greg, I know you said that we went from, I think, 17 to 7 on our turnover from 2019. What do you attribute that to? Is it just less stress from being burdened by all the calls or?
You know, I, I, of course, as, as the director, I'd love to take credit for all that, but I just, I don't know if I can do, if I can do that. I think that it's too early to tell what turnover, that, that sort of, that's a, that's a tremendous reduction. Maybe part of it is the fact that we just hired that many new people, and so we just, you know, new folks, but it also could be contributed to the, the additional salaries that you guys are providing to our staff. I think that's admirable, and it's, it's too early to tell, but maybe that's a factor as well. So we're, we're not quite sure what to make of it, but we hope it continues.
Yeah, I agree. I hope, I hope you're right. I was hoping you would say it had something to do with the salary increases, because I hope we see that as a trend across our entire county staff, so that's why we did it, so. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay, our next order of business is discussion adjustment to the agenda. Does anybody have anything at this time? Okay, okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and I'll just read through all these, and then at the end, if anyone has any questions, we can go back. Okay, our first item is the request approval of the December 16th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Our second is the request approval to purchase four vehicles from Taylor Ford, from Taylor Motor Company as the lowest responsive responsible bidder for a total amount of $109,342 to be paid from the budgeted funds for this fiscal year. And that's under attachment five. And then those are two half-ton regular cab, four-by-four trucks for environmental health, two at $26,176 for a total amount of $52,352. The next is a one, and then that's just one vehicle, and that's a half-ton extended cab, four-by-four truck for the fire marshal in the amount of $27,885. Next is one vehicle, which is a mid-sized all-wheel-drive SUV for HHSA in the amount of $29,105. And the third item is to request approval of budget amendments, and this is, the first one is the Capital Project Fund, Haywood Community College, $52 to appropriate the prior-year credit to go toward the completion of the HCC paving project in order to close out the project. And then next is from the General Fund, HHSA, Healthy Communities, $47,000, a federal grant through the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch of the Department of Public Health for the implementation of community-based programs to respond to the opioid crisis in North Carolina. And that was, I know when, when Brandon and I were in DC a few years ago, or a couple, just, well, less than two years ago, I remember, you remember, Brandon, they were talking about doing something with opioids, the federal was, so the, the, I can't remember her name. Anyway, they were talking about trying to help us, help the communities with the opioid crisis. Okay, so does anyone have any questions on any of those items? In hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are all those in favor indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the next item is the regular agenda is to request approval of the Rural Operating Assistance Program, wrote, application through Mountain Projects for fiscal year 2020, and approval for the county manager to execute all documents pertaining to said applications. We have our Haywood Public Transit Director, Cy Simmons, here today. This is under attachment eight. You're back, Cy.
This is an annual request. I'd like to remind you that these funds are, are, that come to us are used to help transport the elderly and disabled, I'm sorry, the Employment Transportation Assistance Program and the Rural General Public Program. These numbers, this grant is slightly up, and we're proud of that, but we would ask that you allow Mr. Morehead and Ms. Davis to, to sign this grant, and we'll submit that next week.
Anybody have any questions for Cy? This is, we do this every year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Rural Operating Assistance Program, application through Mountain Projects for fiscal year 2020, and approval for the county managers to execute all documents pertaining to said application.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to pose? It's unanimous. Thank you, thank you. Okay, our next order of business is appointments, and our county manager, Brian Morehead, will request approval of Carol James to the Library Board of Trustees. That's under attachment nine. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a nominated nomination for Carol Jones to the Library Board. Mr. Jones has lived in Haywood County for 30 years. He's retired from the paper industry after 36 years since retiring. He's written seven books. He's served as Vice President and President of the Bethel Rural Community Organization. There's just a huge desire to, to serve at the Library Board, and Mr. Kirkpatrick may have more insights, as he says on that board.
Yeah, it was, you know, I, I did not have the opportunity to meet him, but we have a, a group that does the, the interviews, and all of the applicants were highly recommended. Mr. Jones is from the eastern part of the county. We don't really have anyone on our board from the eastern part of the county, so we felt like that would be a good addition as well. But please, those folks that have applied, I would ask if they continue to apply to serve on that board. We have a really good, educated...
We have a really good, educated board right now, and I feel like they're doing a good job.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the appointment of Carol Jones to the Library Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. We do not have a closed session today. And does anyone have anything further for the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming today.